Welcome to the October 17th City Council Meeting. Please rise and salute the flag.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councillor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councillor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Councillor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councillor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councillor Novoselski.
Here.
Here, Councillor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councillor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councillor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Councillor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Councillor President Visconti.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present.
Before we continue, Councillor McKenna would like a moment of personal privilege. Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to pay honor to Daniel Singer, who passed away a few weeks ago. For those of you who knew Dan, he was the father of Bruce, David, Paul, and Leah, husband of the former Ward One councillor Rita Singer. He was Rita's confidant and her most trusted advisor. He was everywhere, he went everywhere with her. I think he wanted to be a councillor. Dan was a lifelong resident of Beauchamp who recently, a couple of years ago, went to Florida and passed in Florida. But his friends will truly miss him, and we honor the family. So could we stand and have a moment of silence for Dan? Thank you.
Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of September 19th?
So moved.
Public hearings, calendar item number three. Hearing called as ordered on a loan order in the amount of $29,500,000 for the Wonderland property acquisition.
This is a public hearing. We're going to start off with proponents, those in favor.
Good evening, Council. Richard Viskey, CFO, 281 Broadway. I'm here to speak in favor of the bond authorization for the acquisition of the Wonderland property. Being on the member of the school building committee, we've been through an extensive process and vetting of potential sites for the new high school, and not many lots that could actually handle a school of the size that we need to build for the future of the city. However, after vetting through all the options, Wonderland seemed like the most advantageous for for the city. It does come with a price tag, but I'm here to speak in favor of the acquisition and happy to answer any questions of the council with regard to anything that has to do with the bonding, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents, those in favor?
Hi, Council President. Diane Kelly, Superintendent of Schools, 101 School Street, Riviere. I also want to speak on behalf of the children of Riviere and the teachers at Riviere High School and their administrative staff, who are in desperate need of a new facility. I know we've been before the council before to talk about the need for the new school, and thankfully had your support in beginning the process with the MSBA five years ago now to try to get this building built, and it's exciting to be at a point in time where we're going to have a space identified and be able to really start to explore that property and the soils and other things that we need to approve before we can actually start building. So thank you for your support in the past, and I hope that we can count on you tonight and the future as well.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Anyone else?
Stacy Bronson Rizzo, 510 Riviere Beach Boulevard. Like you all, I want nothing but what is best for our students, and I know each and every one of you do. Career technology education is vital for our students nowadays. It will provide students with the academic technical skills, knowledge, and training necessary to succeed in future careers and become lifelong learners. It will prepare them for the workplace competencies and makes academic content accessible to students by providing it in a hands-on context. This property that we are looking at right now is vital for those needs, to be able to give those students the room, the space to grow and become those lifelong learners so they can come back to the city and do the same for those students as we are doing for them right now. So I thank you in advance for your vote to take the property by eminent domain, and I wish nothing but the best for our students in the city to come. Thank you.
Thank you, School Committee Woman, Ms. Rizzo. Any other proponents?
Good evening. My name is Farhad Tadrami. I'm the manager of Riviere Community School, and I'm here to support this proposal. As someone who is running a community program that is providing learning for our adults and families, this is something that, you know, we really needed for a long time, and it's going to benefit not only the high school students and the teachers, but also the parents and family and community members and others who really needed a space where they can run programs that will support the whole city. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Please step to the mic.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Christine Robertson. I reside at 187 Chargestree. If we don't invest in the future of America, which is our students, we will be lost. This is a very wise investment and long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none. We're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Those opposed. Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. City councilors. Councillor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I agree with everybody who spoke so far. We need to invest in our children. Many years ago, when we undertook the, I think at that time, was it a sixth school building program? Some of us were on the council then, and we wound up building the New Whalen, the Susan Bee, the Romney Marsh, and the New Hill School, the Paul Riviere. Yes, I'm losing track. So, I mean, and, you know, and we did that enthusiastically, and clearly we need a new high school. In fact, I'll go back to 2014. I don't exactly know what the situation is now, but we were on the verge of losing our accreditation because our science labs needed to be updated, and the school building authority at that time would not give us the money for new science labs because they said they felt it was throwing good money after bad and that we had to consider building a new high school. And, you know, we took, I took that, personally, I took that very seriously back then. I take it very seriously today. We definitely need a new high school. The problem that I have right now is I think we're not all looking at the finances correctly. And I've said from the beginning, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the meeting on the night this was voted on, but I think it's a horrible location. I think our transportation costs are going to go through the roof to have 2,000 students descending upon Butler Circle during rush hour. I think is going to be a very dangerous and troublesome situation for the city going forward. I don't have any children in high school. I'm not going to have to worry about it, but as a community leader right now that's going to vote on this, I take, you know, I'm looking at this, and I'm very, very concerned about the location, number one. Number two, why we're here tonight is the finances. Now, you got, all of you here might know that Link Logistics, a subsidiary of Blackstone, just spent, depending upon how you want to look at it, $3 to $5 million per acre for the Global property. So that's $3 to $5 million, and, you know, depending upon how you look at the submerged land and all that stuff that had to be taken when they took over Global. In addition, they just spent $36 million just for the FedEx lot, just for the FedEx, $36 million. So now, anyone that thinks we're going to get this land for $29 million, I think is being either misled or is just making a huge miscalculation. If we're paying our outside, outside interests are paying $3 to $5 million an acre over here at Global, and we're taking 33 acres, what's $3 to $5 million per acre? You know, it's pretty simple in my mind to come up with that calculation. And what's going to happen if we approve this $29 million right now before going back and rethinking this, we're going to find ourselves in court because they will never settle on $29 million. It's happened with other eminent domain takings that we've been brought back into court because they feel they were underpaid, and they have been successful. So we have to be extremely careful. I assume this is going to committee anyway, but, you know, we really need a serious conversation surrounding this money that we're looking to invest in. Do we need to invest in a high school? Yes. Do the kids deserve it? Yes. Am I in favor of all that? Absolutely. But we need to know what we're doing. I see the Director of Finance here, Rich, and thank you for being here, as you always are. We don't know, is this going to require a Proposition Two and a Half override, or is it going to require a debt exclusion? I mean, do we know we're dealing with $29 million? Or, I mean, just based on numbers that I've seen recently, it seems to me that's a very low number.
Yeah, I can't speak too much of the valuation. $29 million is the number that we're looking to borrow right now. That, in the interest rate environment we're in right now, would be about $1.6 to $1.8 million a year, depending on where the rate would come out when we sell the bonds. That is something that, you know, is above and beyond the cost of the actual building of the high school. So I'm currently working on forecasting this out, want to see how this vote goes, and we got some serious work to do looking at the next 10 to 20 years in the city because it is a substantial amount. You might be looking at another $13 million a year for the high school itself, so you're talking about $15 million of capacity now. We all hear that Suffolk Downs is going to bring $40 million in new growth over the next 20 years, so we got to look at how that forecasts out. We got to look at how our pension obligations forecast out, all the types of things we can look at for additional revenues, and definitely working right now to try to build this high school without an override or without a debt exclusion. It's not very typical that a city would do a debt exclusion or override. So right now is where I'm, I got the auditors here, we're closing the books, and we're ready to look in the forecast out and give everyone assurance that we're going to be able to afford this high school.
Well, thank you, Rich. And, Mr. President, I know there's other councilors who want to speak, so I'm just going to wrap it up right now. As I said before, I'm thinking this, well, I think by, I don't know if it's by ordinance, but I think it's by our own rules that something like this would go to committee, but...
It's going to go to committee.
Okay. Thank you for the edification on that. But I, as the Director of Finance just said, the city, we have a lot of work to do, and I don't want this in any way to be perceived, oh, they're not for the children or this or anything like that. This is not about that. We have a whole nother constituency out there. There's the children that we need to care about, but we also got to care about the taxpayers, the people that are going to be footing this bill. And if we don't really know what we're dealing with, if we don't know, we're walking into an unknown area right here, taking 32 prime acres at Butler Circle across from a major MBTA station. Who knows what this valuation is going to come back on? That is all above and beyond my feeling of it's not in the right place. And whatever we do, you know, there's this, you know, I understand there's an urgency, and we have to do it, and we want to do it, but this is going to be a 30, 40, 50-year decision we're going to make. So, you know, I don't think it hurts to say, hey, let's hold on for a minute and see where, see what this is actually going to cost us. That's just my opinion, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate my colleague's comments, and he said some of the stuff I was going to say about the simple cost of this land. I projected it would be about $100 million. Now, he gave some figures that backed that up, so I'm not going to go too deep in that. But before I go on, I want to just say for the record, I am absolutely for a high school. Just because I don't agree with the site selection, I don't agree with what it's going to cost and how we're going to afford it, doesn't mean I don't want to build a high school. If I had my way and I could choose tomorrow, I'd choose to go up two stories in the same location where it is and build it there. I think that would be fiscally responsible. But we're talking about children here. I want to talk about your grandchildren, your great-grandchildren, and your great-great-grandchildren because that's who's going to pay for this, okay? Not only by taking, by selecting the site of Wonderland, and my dream and my hope is that we will reconsider this site selection. I know I come up here and spoke when I was on a leave of absence from the council here. Just joking. When I was not on the council, I did come up and plead that this was the biggest fiscal mistake in the history of the city. We were going to, we were going to take a piece of property off the tax rolls, and a conservative estimate in my mind is $1 billion lost revenue, okay? That's based on a 50-year revenue of 22, 22 and a half million a year. That's half of what Suffolk Downs is going to produce. So that's how I came up with that number. It's not a pie in the sky. Everything I do is research. Everything I do is reasoned, and I can't see us taking all the growth from Suffolk Downs because that's what it's going to take to pay for this high school. Not only, let's say, I can't convince a few of my colleagues to change their mind, and we go ahead with the Wonderland site, it's going to, it is going to take all the growth from Suffolk Downs, all the future growth that was supposed to, and I might add, was supposed to relieve the taxpayers, $47 million a year in revenue from Suffolk Downs. Now you're going to take all of that to pay for taking the land at Wonderland and to pay for the high school. So I don't know how we afford this, and I'm not as well-versed as the CFO, but I think it's very risky, and I think that we would do better to not take a piece of property off the tax roll and not, not sell out the future for our great-great-grandchildren because that's what this will do. So I'm hopeful when this goes to committee, we can go over all the facts and figures and come to a reasonable decision that doesn't cripple the city for the next 50 years. And trust me when I say I want a high school. I spent my own time building the first two schools. I went to every single construction meeting, and I stopped things from happening that were bad because I had 35 years' construction experience. But I spent my time, that's how much I care about the kids of this city. So I spent, I went to every single construction meeting for the first two schools and most of them for the third school. So I know what I'm talking about when I talk about building a school. And I just think this is a big mistake, and thank you for the way.
Thank you. Councillor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to set one fact out there for everyone. We built five brand-new elementary and middle schools since I've been on this council. I voted for every single one of them, okay? They were supposed to cost $85 million, and I did the math. I think at the time, we were supposed to get up in the 90% financing back from the state. Well, that changed, and I thought that spending $7 or $8 million on buying these schools, building these schools, was a great thing because we would have had to spend that at any one of 15 or 16 older schools on maintenance over the, so to me, it was a good thing, okay? Everybody said we didn't need schools at that time, 17 schools, 16 schools, whenever it was. The Akenback, the Barrows, the Liberty, the Walcott, the Roosevelt, the Shertliff, those are just several of the schools that were closed, and they were closed because people said, well, you know, the enrollment's downs and down. I'd love to have my hands on those properties today. So what do we do? We sold them to developers who came in and built brand-new apartments, brand-new condominiums, and brought more kids into the school system. So, and that wasn't too long ago. When they sold them, I believe it was around, I don't know, 22 to 23 years ago, okay? So I'm in favor of a high school 100%, okay? I think there's a lot of areas we have to look at, okay? And mainly the flooding down there. We've got 32 acres. There's probably 17 of those acres that could flood, okay? There are vacant lots on School Street, they're not School Street, Suffolk, right there, that need to be addressed, okay? I know people have called me, okay, because I represent the area, okay? And they want to know what's going on, and I think whatever meeting we have in the future before anyone votes on this, I think we should have those neighbors down there at that meeting, okay? It's so important. You know, there's a piece of property, and Tony Zambudo makes a point, it's centrally located, right next to MBTA Station, three miles from Logan Airport, short distance from where the proposed commuter line is going in down there. Ideal, nobody wants to develop it because of the flooding down there, okay? So the thing I say now is, is this something we should look at more closely on that property? I know when they increased the Cox Building at the Mass General in Boston, they built right over the existing building. They went up, they put pilings in, and they went up. And I think MGH and their construction teams, they're pretty smart, their architects are pretty smart. They seem to know what they're doing, any buildings I've ever been into down there. So, you know, I think it's, we need to look at this, okay? I'm not against voting for the money for the property, okay? But the question I ask is, what about the lots that are in between the houses, okay, on Charme Street? Should we take those? What is Wonderland going to do with those properties? These are good questions we have to ask. There's a house here, a lot owned by Wonderland here, there's a lot owned by the city in Wonderland at the corner of Dun Road and Charme. All things should be answered, and I haven't heard anyone explain that to anybody in the city, including the city council. So again, I'm not against the high school. I think it's sorely needed. And I think, you know, the numbers that are thrown out there, I can see this with the land-taking and addressing the flood issue, you're up around $400 million. No doubt in my mind about it. And you're going to get, you're going to get, what, 70%? 70 to 75% back from the Commonwealth, okay? So we're going to be spending in the area of $100 million to build this high school, which is going to be on the backs of the taxpayers. Myself, I'm one of them, and I'm sure all of my colleagues are too. I think this is something we have to look at very closely. No question about it. We need to get more neighborhood involvement down there. I'm all for that. I've had people, like I said, I've had people call me, what's going on? What's going on? We don't know.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, so I think, again, I'm for the high school 100%, but I think there's a lot of areas that we have to look into, and...
Thank you, Council.
Am I allowed to respond to that?
Hold on, no. Let's finish off with some of the councilors, and Councillor Silvestri, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I appreciate all that my colleagues have to say, and I do agree that we may pay a little bit more than what is expected, but I think the numbers being thrown around here, 400, 500 million dollars are kind of crazy for us to even be suggesting any of those numbers. We all sat to a very informative session with the reasons of why this building in this property did not sell when it was, it's been on the market for many years now. Several reasons is because of the ask price and the lack of ability to build because of flooding in conservation land that is now grown there. And I think all this is in our favor, taking that an eminent domain. I don't think there's a price tag that we can put on the children, the future, the grandchildren, the great-grandchildren, or any of the children of the city, and it's on us to do something. Whether we make a decision here tonight or not, we need to make something happen because we can't keep kicking this can down the road because it's only, the cost is only going to go up. And we already know that our, as of 2014, our science labs weren't up to par. What are they in 2022? Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, and this isn't to contradict some, this certainly should be plenty of discussion whenever we're talking about bonding $30 million, and then, of course, the future expenses. We already know the high school itself is going to cost in the hundreds of millions of dollars. The land acquisition is really the unknown that we're, we are, we're all concerned about. I've been on the, the school building author, Committee. This, the planning stages for this, just so everyone is aware, started prior to COVID. Okay, we started in February, or January of 2020, and the meetings went virtual swiftly after. And we met on a regular basis for now over two years. Hundred, I shouldn't say hundreds, but 30, 40, 50 meetings regarding the site selection, regarding the type of building, regarding the, the, the style of construction, regarding architecture. Site selection probably took eight to 10 months. There was upwards of a dozen sites. It whittled down to eight, to five, to four, to three, to two, to one. So it wasn't just picked like, hey, let's go and take, let's go spend 100, 29, or maybe more, million dollars to acquire land. And certainly, there was definitely the pros and cons weighed when it came to the site itself, where, where it was, the, the traffic that is involved in the site. But current site, next to the current site were probably runner-ups. But the soft costs, there's a lot of soft costs that people aren't aware of that really came into the not choosing that. There's a huge culvert that runs under the, the field right now. To, to build, to build a high school on that culvert, it was around a $10 million change in that culvert. So just the soft costs, and forget about buying land, we'd have to eventually relocate those parks to the, but just the culvert alone, the culvert work that was going to be required to build on the opposite site was, you know, don't quote me, but it was around $8 to $10 million potentially. Could be more, could be less, just like the appraisal cost. So the independent appraisal came back at $29 million. Even me, I'm hesitant too. I understand what, what some of my fellow counselors are mentioning. I know that an independent appraiser, you got someone that could maybe put up a stink and, and sue and ask for more. So I have factored into my head a certain percentage above that to be, to kind of like brace myself for. I don't think it's going to be $100 million. And quite frankly, again, I, I applaud Counsel Zambudo's billion-dollar evaluation. The, the site itself has created thousands of dollars in the last 10 years, not even close to millions, thousands, because it's been dormant. And then, so if the site is so well, if it's so, worth so much money, then why hasn't it done anything in 10, 12, 15 years? And prior to that, it was a failing, unfortunately, it was a failing business over the last 50 years. I mean, it was, it was thriving at one point, and at some point, it, it started to fail. So the site, yeah, sure, it's worth a lot of money, absolutely. It's not 100% buildable, so you're not really getting 33 buildable acres of land. I'm sure there's going to be a point in time where we decide that we don't need all of that, and there might be some sort of workings down the road that there is value to get back. But, you know, the Link Logistics site, Counselor, it was, it's, it's, someone paid a lot of money for that because it's, you can throw a rock and hit Logan Airport. That's what Link Logistics does. They're a, like a last-mile delivery site, last mile meaning right next to the airport. And it was also zoned accordingly. Suffolk, Wonderland is not zoned for anything really that is desirable right now. So someone to come in there and spend hundreds of millions of dollars would ask for the zoning. How does that happen? We have to approve that zoning. So the, the value is really to us. Certainly, someone that wants to put, you know, a couple hundred units up there or more because they think that's everything that was pitched to us over the last eight years was housing in some mixed use, maybe a hotel, but it was mostly housing and mixed use. That was, that's really the only value that's been there. So I get some of the apprehension, but this wasn't just thrown out here today. We've known about this for two years. There's been 100, 30, 40, 50 meetings. We're going to have to make a decision. I go back to Newton North High School was built, I don't know, 13, 14 years ago, it was $200 million high school. The, the town almost went upside down. The town was flipping over. It is one of the best regional high schools in the state. You go down, and every new high school, you go back five years, you just say, "Wow, that was a good value." You build a high school, 10 years later, you go, "Wow, imagine they only, they only paid $200 million?" 10 years later, they go, "Wow, imagine they only paid $300 million?" Essex Agricultural, one of the best schools around. They, they were wondering how they were going to pay for it. When it comes to things like education, when it comes to things like serious infrastructure, when it comes to things like these huge quality-of-life issues that make a city really a great place to live and a great place to raise their family, we figure it out. And that's what, I don't want to get sued, and I don't want to have to spend $100 million, but I will tell you, I will support this because we're going to figure it out. And that's what's going to end up, that's what, that's what I'll be in support of. Every counselor has an opinion, but I've seen it all. I, I, I don't know it all, but I've seen it all, and I think that this pros and cons is the best decision, okay?
Thank you. Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I was a schoolteacher for 32 and a half years and upped the high school from 1991 to 2015. When I started Rivier High School in 1991, there was 800 students. It wasn't built for a large amount of students. A lot of people had their students in private schools and because the education wasn't really well, it wasn't good. And then all of a sudden, Dr. Dakin came in and Dr. Kelly, and they changed the whole concept of the education, and more kids came, more buildings, but more kids came. When I left in 2015, there was 2,200 kids, okay? I don't know what the population is now, Dr. Kelly, but I know, I know our science labs were, I had 44 kids in my classroom because we couldn't put these kids anywhere. But anyways, I am all for education. I think we've changed the dynamics. When I was a schoolteacher, I think we were the best urban high school in Massachusetts or whatever. It was, so I, I mean, we did change people to come, to, to live here, to be educated, to educate their kids because the education changed. But I am concerned about the money. I don't want the taxpayers to, to take the brunt of this. I know Sogas has built right in their spot, they have, I know they have, built in their athletic field, but Winthrop is also land poor, and they built a new high school right, right there. And I know they don't have the population that we have, but I am very concerned about the millions of dollars that we're going to spend for a beautiful, wonderful high school. And I don't know, I can't tell you because I don't know how much these people are going to ask for to take, take the land by eminent domain, how much the legal fees are going to cost. And that's a concern, and that's, none of that has been brought up, legal fees. And, and, you know, the high school, I, I know it's $300 million to put a new high school in or more, but that's a lot of money. So that's just my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McKenna. This is going to go, if there are no other counselors wishing to speak, this is going to go to Ways and Means on October 24th. I'm just going to wrap up. There are obviously concerns on both ends, and they're valid concerns on both ends. And what I'm hoping for at the Ways and Means that some of these questions come out and are answered, you know? We need some answers because it's hard to vote on something that we don't know. The major concern, or one of the concerns, if, the, the 300, the $30 million, yes, that that is a concern. The construction cost is going, let me, just so everybody's aware, the construction cost of this is going to exceed $300 million very easily, okay? So I, I'm going to put it out there, right there. That's, that's a big number, and we need to know how we're going to pay for it, what we're going to do. We can't put the burden on the taxpayers, especially the taxpayers that don't have children in the system. That's a concerning far, but we also need a high school. It is obvious that something has to be done. And I just hope that all the counselors have their questions and come prepared so we can have those questions answered and feel comfortable with the vote. That being said, this is going to be-
Mr. President?
Yes?
Just before you close it out and, and refer to committee, if I, if you'd just allow me just 60 seconds of latitude, because some things that I just want to bring up, I think Counsel Zambudo had talked about building where the location is. And I understand there's people on the city council, I wasn't on the city council during that time, people that went to meetings, whether it's 30 or 40 or 50 meetings. And I, so I totally understand that. But, you know, at the end of the day, there's 11 of us that have to vote on this. So for those of us who weren't, didn't have the chance or didn't, for one reason or another, attend those meetings, it doesn't mean that we're any less qualified to vote and voice our opinions on this. I mean, I know just, you know, Counsel Zambudo and I and Counsel Powers have all overseen, we oversaw that first five-school building program, and, you know, I had the great opportunity to, to leave the New Hill School. So I'm not unfamiliar with the process. We had takings involved over there as well. You know, Newton High School was, you know, like was brought up, great high school, it really is. And, and I, and I totally understand it. You built the school 10 years ago, 10 years later, you're going to be happy you did it. But a wealthy town like Winchester, Winchester, they built up and over their existing high school, their existing location, because it made financial sense. And I think when we make these decisions, we're not construction workers here, we're, we are an authority that appropriates money to build things, and we have to be sure that we're appropriating money, you know, in the right way, that's going to be a balance of giving the kids what they need but respecting the taxpayers' ability to afford it. So I just want to close with that. I know it's going to committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that being said, we're going to, those, those comments, Dr. Kelly, can be brought up at, at subcommittee. We close that side of the hearing. We, we close that side of the hearing, but we'll, we'll bring that up. I'm sure you're going to be present at the-
Do you really want to talk about the next meeting?
You, you can have that vote, you can have that discussion at the subcommittee. No worries. With that being said, we're going to close this and send this to Ways and Means. Thank you.
Next up is the zoning subcommittee report. I'm sorry?
It's, it's, I guess there's a meeting on Thursday, this Thursday on Zoom, and maybe we can, yes. Anybody is welcome to attend. Thank you. Thank you.
Next up is the zoning subcommittee report.
Counsel Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we had two items in front of us. Item number 22-211, requested to withdraw without prejudice. That was voted on favorably to allow them to withdraw. So that, that was, again, voted on favorably by the council or the zoning subcommittee. And then 22-266 regarding the zoning map in the city of Rivier for conservation open space zoning. That was voted on favorably as amended. So if Madam Clerk, if you'd like to vote on that, was the committee of the whole.
Take up the first one?
We're going to take up the first one, yes.
So that was on the special permit application of 535 Broadway. It was reported out by Counselor Keith. That was to be withdrawn without prejudice. That received a favorable recommendation. Shall the city council allow the petitioner to withdraw the special permit application without prejudice? Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Is absent.
Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit application has been withdrawn without prejudice.
On the-
Second reading as amended?
Ordered on a second reading as amended. Ordered on a third reading as amended. Request a roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
On engrossment and ordainment, shall the city council approve an ordinance further amending the zoning map of the city of Rivier by establishing a conservation and open space zoning district? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been engrossed and ordained. Next up is the appointments subcommittee report.
Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we had one item on the agenda, the appointment of Natividad Hernandez, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This is the third time she has not shown for the meeting, and it was unanimously voted to send an unfavorable recommendation to the city council, and I ask that the council of the whole please support that decision. Thank you.
Roll call.
Shall the city council confirm the appointment of Natividad Hernandez? Counselor Cogliandro?
No.
No, Counselor Keith?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
Nope.
No, Counselor Morabito?
No.
No, Counselor Novoselsky?
No.
No, Counselor Powers?
No.
No, Counselor Rizzo?
No.
No, Counselor Serino?
No.
No, Counselor Silvestri?
No.
No, Counselor Zambudo?
No.
No, and Counsel President Visconti?
No.
No, the appointment has been denied. Next up is communications. Calendar item number seven, communication from Fatu Drami of, of the Rivier Community School requesting approval of a conflict of interest disclosure form for Jane Doe 1.
Before we continue, I would like the public as well as the city council to know that these employees are, their names have been withheld because these women are victims of domestic violence and are exempt from public disclosure. So I, I wanted to let everyone know if that was a question, so that's the reason. If any counselors have questions on their names, they can reach out to our city clerk. Thank you. Ms. Fatu?
My name is Fatu Drami. I am the manager of Rivier Community School, the city's adult education program. I'm here to request for a special employee status for three of my newly hired staff, two of them ESL teachers, that English as a second language teachers. And we, they are good candidates with good qualifications, and they were hired when we were doing the interview. They were looking for more positions, so we also referred them to the school, which we kind of like refer each other from the public schools and the Rivier Community Schools whenever we have candidates that have the qualifications that we are looking for. So they started working for the school in August and in September. When they started working for me, we realized that they cannot work for me because, you know, it's a conflict of interest. So we went through the process and we submitted the form to the ethic commission, and they referred us back to the city council to get approval for that to happen. And the third person also is also a para at the public schools, and the same thing. She's going to be working for me as a security because we have a lobby where we have people come through the door and we have someone to be there to make sure that, you know, with their direct people in the building where they need to go, but also to make sure that we are safe in the building and it's a welcoming space. So these three women are people that ideally needed to work for me, so I'm here to ask for approval from the city council to allow me to hire them to be a special employee.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Hearing and seeing, oh, Counsel Vice President.
Mr. President, I just wanted to say for the record that when I received my council packet, I was very hesitant, given that the names were redacted, and I'm glad to know that there was a, you know, this is a legitimate, valid reason, seeing that they are victims of domestic violence, and I will support these tonight. Thank you.
No other questions, we'll take a roll call on-
Shall the city council approve the conflict of interest disclosure form for Jane Doe 1 to enable her to work part-time for both the community school and Rivier Public Schools? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the disclosure form has been approved.
Okay.
Calendar item number eight, communication from Fatu Dramay of the Revere Community School requesting approval of a conflict of interest disclosure form for Jane Doe two.
I believe there's no need to go on with that. Uh, any other questions? Okay. Hearing and seeing none. Roll call?
Shall the city council approve the conflict of interest disclosure form for Jane Doe two to enable her to work part-time for both the community school and Revere Public Schools? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, that, uh, her disclosure form has been approved. Uh, calendar item number nine, communication from Fatu Dramay of the Revere Community School requesting approval of a conflict of interest disclosure form for Inam Adale.
No other, if there are no questions, we'll take a roll call?
Shall the city council approve the conflict of interest disclosure form for Inam Adale to enable him to work part-time for both the Revere Public Schools and as a security guard for the community school? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, this disclosure form has been approved.
Thank you so much, councillors.
Thank you.
Calendar item number ten, communication from the SUDI Director Julia Newhall relative to a donation from Collective Premium Cannabis.
Good evening. My name's Julia Newhall. I'm the Director of the SAD and Homeless Initiatives Office. I'm here tonight to ask your permission to accept a five do, five thousand dollar donation that was made to my office by Collective Cannabis.
Okay. Um, do we have any, Councilor Morabito?
If you could just elaborate on how this donation came about?
Absolutely. So essentially, this, the CEO reached out to me to ex, explain that they were looking for local community initiatives that were working towards addressing the issues that we address within, within the city. And they did some research, they found our office, and they just wanted to make a donation, no strings attached, just trying to give back based on the revenue that they've raised over the past few years. They're out of Littleton, they're not even, you know, in this area.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Silvestri?
Um, thank you, Director Newhall. And, uh, I just want to say this is, uh, the amazing things that come out of the cannabis industry. And, uh, one more reason I think we should look to bring the industry here to this city.
Thank you, council. Councilor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first of all, I support this a hundred percent. I'm just curious, what do you, what do you think you're gonna use that money for initially?
So, really, I mean, we're a completely grant-funded office, so even just the five thousand dollars will, you know, make a dent. We haven't discussed, it will probably go towards providing support for people who are
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's the extent of where our monies go, anyway. Any other questions?
Hearing and seeing none. Let's, uh, take a roll call?
Pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, shall the city council approve a donation in the amount of five thousand dollars from Collective Premium Cannabis? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
I recuse myself.
Recused. Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the donation has been accepted.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Calendar item number eleven, communication from the city solicitor Paul Capizzi requesting that the city council grant special municipal employee status for Attorney Jerry D'Ambrosio and Attorney Paul Tellier.
Good evening, everyone. Chapter two-sixty-eight is the conflict of interest law that applies to all public employees, municipal employees particularly. It, at times, can apply to people who do consulting and legal work for the city, even though they're not officially employees of the city, but they work in a capacity enough so that the, for purposes of the law, it would apply to them. An outside attorney providing services for municipality is a public employee for the purposes of the conflict of interest law, which is why I'm here today. Um, the individual providing the service is the public employee, not the law firm itself, but just the individual. Because D'Ambrosio, Law Office, and a number of his employees do a lot of work for the city, there are times at which it may appear that there's a conflict occurring. This is especially true since the fire down at three-seventy Ocean Ave, where we decided to aggressively pursue compliance with both the sanitary, the building code, and the fire safety code at that location. So we sought the assistance of outside counsel. Jerry's firm also, lawyers in his firm can do work coming before you in, for individuals looking for, whether it's a special permit application or variance. So to avoid the appearance of impropriety, I am specifically requesting, and Jerry and Paul are aware of this, that they, those two individuals only, because they're the main litigators for that firm, be given the designation, a special municipal employee status, because of all the aggressive work we're taking on some of the buildings, well, namely, three-seventy Ocean Ave right now, in trying to get it, um, to comply with all the code that it's supposed to comply with. They are special municipal employees if they work for fewer than eight hundred hours for the city and get paid for that. Jerry's, particularly Jerry D'Ambrosio, has never been on a bill that I've received to the city for more than a few hours, if ever at all. And it's only recently because of three-seventy that his time has been on there. I don't even think he's at sixty hours right now. And this is eight hour, eight hundred hours in a three-hundred-and-sixty-five date period. So just as a precautionary measure, and to make sure everything looks proper and above board, I've requested that both Jerry and Paul Tellier be designated as special municipal employees.
Thank you, council. Uh, Council Vice President?
Mr. President, thank you, and through you to the city solicitor. So just to clarify, you know, some rumors that are around town or whatnot, can you clarify this would not entitle these two individuals to a city pension? This would not protect them under, you know, like, city, under city law for anything? Um, just to, just to clarify on that. Where they do, uh, they're, they do have business, other business pending before the city?
Well, I, I prefer not to deal in rumors, but no, it would not. They are not in any way entitled to a pension. They're not in any way given some sort of pass to break the law, if that's what anyone thinks, even for a moment. No.
Councilor Keith?
No, I, I, I had similar questions, and I think that, like you, Councilor Sorino, you know, you get, you get some random calls, thinking that what, everyone's trying to pull something over. I think that this is just being upfront and, and transparent about, and being precautionary, because more so recently with, uh, what's going on down on, uh, three-seventy. Um, but the city is always hired outside legal sources to do a lot of the safe housing work, particularly the same law firm that we're talking about right now for many years. There have been different names as far as partners and whatnot. So I think that this is probably why this is more so in front of us. But I think this is being incredibly transparent, and it's really just making sure that everyone's aware. But in the same breath, the, the public is more aware, you know, of, of, of how we do business, and we're keeping things up in front of everyone. So, uh, I think it's a, I think it's a good, good, good move.
That's exactly correct. D'Ambrosio's law firm has been doing work for, well, I've been here since two thousand and one. And since I've been here, we've used them for, in some manner or, or another, to do some legal assistance. Um, the lawyers that were working on the forty-U program, particularly Peter Brown, that's all they did. They would be considered municipal employees for the application of the state conflict of interest law. Doesn't mean they get a pension, doesn't mean we give them sick pay or anything like that. It just meant the state conflict, conflict of interest law would apply to them. As a special municipal employee, as I said earlier, it gives them a little more freedom to do stuff for us within certain parameters that are designated by the statute. So it really is just to be open and transparent, and to make sure that everything is above board.
Um, any other further questions? Um, if I may, um, this is primarily for three-seventy Ocean Ave. Correct me if I'm wrong?
Honestly, in all my years here, that's the only bill I've ever gotten with Jerry's name on it. Paul Tellier is his lead litigator, so that's correct.
So I guess, uh, one of the questions I have, does, does the employee, uh, the special municipal employee status, does, does that end, okay, at any given time? Or can we, can we end that, uh, special, uh, employee status after the three-seventy Ocean Ave is complete? Is there an end date? Can we put an end date on that? Or is it just, uh, something that's open-ended?
That's a good question that I hadn't considered. Certainly, if Paul Tellier or Jerry were to leave the firm or leave the business, then their status would no longer apply. I think it's a good idea to keep it open regardless, because I don't know what's going on down the future. Jerry and Paul generally don't do any work for us at all. So even though that may seem like an open-ended thing for purposes of this council, if three-seventy gets all up and running, my sense is we'll be finding other properties somewhere down the future that might need the same kind of aggressive litigation to get them to comply. But in answer to your question, I'll certainly find out. If that's the case, that's something we can consider.
Okay. All right. Um, that being said, if there are no other further questions, um, we can vote on this this evening. We'll take a roll call?
Pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter two-sixty-eight A, shall the city council grant special municipal employee status upon Attorney Jerry D'Ambrosio and Attorney Paul Tellier for their legal services related to the Department of Municipal Inspections Matters and resulting legal actions effective July first, two thousand and twenty-two? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, special municipal employee status has been granted. Calendar item number twelve, communication from the mayor relative to the authorization of establishing a municipal electricity aggregation program.
Good evening, everyone. Gianni Hill, aide-tamara Rigo, two-eight-one Broadway. Uh, Mr. President threw you into the council. I'm here tonight to ask that you all vote in favor of an electricity aggregation program here in the city of Revere. Our office has received an influx of calls and emails from residents recently, asking us to look into establishing our own aggregation program. There are currently over one-hundred-and-seventy municipalities, um, throughout the Commonwealth that have aggregation programs in place. We should be one of them, too. It's great to have competition. I like to compare it to when we only had Comcast in the city as a cable provider, for example. We now have Comcast and RCN and some others. Competition is always great. It keeps rates affordable for our residents, and that's the goal here. And this all sort of came about with the recent announcement from National Grid with, uh, a, a pretty steep, um, rate increase, going from around eleven and a half cents per kilowatt hour to thirty-three cents per kilowatt hour effective November first. That's really gonna hit and affect a lot of residents and a lot of households in the city. Unfortunately, this aggregation program won't, i- it's a pretty lengthy process to fully get it up and running, but the time is now to sort of get it off the ground. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. We've been doing some extensive research. I've had some interns in the office as well, helping with some research on what other municipalities are doing as well.
Thank you. Uh, Council Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. And Gianni, thank you for coming up here tonight. And this is great news. Uh, I actually spoke to the mayor about this, and, and it's pretty exciting to hear, given the residents' options, um, especially when this number's dropped on their lap, um, so soon without any time, you know, it, it's, it's, I, I have a motion in later tonight to, about National Grid, but, uh, I, I commend the mayor's office for doing this, and, and I will be supporting it.
Council Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Gianni, Mr. Hill. I just wanted to commend you in the mayor's office. Um, I had gotten some phone calls from Ward Six residents about this, because there was a news report about the city of Medford's, uh, successful aggregation program, and how their residents are able to get cheaper electric rates. And, you know, I got a few residents calling saying, why aren't we doing this? How can we do this? Uh, so I called the mayor's office, and Gianni was already working on it, so I was glad to hear that. So I'm thrilled that it's before us, and I'm happy to support it tonight. So thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Council?
I just have one question, Mr. President. Um, is, is there any program within the city that if people are having a hard time this winter with home heating oil, is there an assistance program that's in place to help them with that? And if there is, could you just explain it to us, and maybe people that are watching that might need some assistance? That would be helpful.
Sure thing. Through you, Mr. President, and to the council. Um, so one resource that we refer residents to when they call the mayor's office in particular is CAPPIC. They have a wonderful, um, I believe it is income-based, but they do have an income-based fuel assistance program. Um, I think specifically for heating as well. Um, unfortunately, I did find out in some of my recent research that a lot of oil companies in the Commonwealth, or suppliers in the area, are dropping their fuel assistance programs due to the rising costs. So I know that is an obstacle we're looking into. Um, just coming down the pipeline as well, the mayor's office, we're, we're working right now with Consumer Affairs and some other departments to put together some information sessions, hoping to host them at the senior center, um, to really invite all residents from the city to learn about some sort of cost-saving measures they can take. There are a few different ways that you can go about that, from shopping for competitive suppliers for your energy. We have a great partnership with Mass Saves, for example. So the first thing I'm always recommending to folks for heating assistance, CAPPIC. And look into Mass Saves as well, because they have great weatherization programs and free, free home assessments. So they've been a great partner. We've had it on social media. Feel free to give us a call. We're happy to provide more information on that.
So if I could just follow up on that, Mr. President. Um, so, so CAPPIC, yeah, that's definitely income-based, and it, and it's limited. I know there's some people that sit on the council right now that have, you know, some pretty significant experience with CAPPIC, uh, as do I, that can, um, you know, kind of attest to that. But I'm wondering, um, if there, whether it's through OPERA funds that might be available, that you could maybe draft some sort of program that allocates a certain amount of money aside, and, uh, you know, to maybe help people? Because I'm very fearful right now. You're talking about eleven cents per kilowatt hour to thirty-three cents. That's with electricity. But, you know, heat is heat. A lot of people in this city still use oil. And, um, I mean, I'm just afraid that we're gonna have a very, very difficult winter, given these inflationary conditions that we're in right now. So everywhere, all the other expenses are going up, interest rates are going up, gasoline to put in your cars going up, and now you gotta fill your home heating tank. I, I'm really, I'm really concerned that we're gonna have more and more house fires, because people are gonna be looking at alternative ways to heat their house, whether it's using ovens or using other forms of, you know, pellet stoves or whatever it might be to, to, you know, to provide home heat, um, in a non-traditional way, that either you're gonna have people that are gonna be risking their own health because of CO2 or whatever else might be emanating from some of these alternative sources, or you, or we're gonna, uh, see, uh, an inordinate amount of additional house fires, um, because of, I think, what people are gonna have to, um, go through this winter. So I would appreciate it, through you, Mr. President, if you could maybe talk to the mayor about seeing if there's any available funding that maybe, you know, sitting, like I say, in some of these OPERA fund accounts, or whatever other accounts there might be, stabilization, that you could set aside for emergency home heating situations for people, because we're coming up on that time, and, uh, I think that would be a wise thing to do. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilor Zambudo?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. And, you know, I, obviously, I've served on CAPPIC board for twenty-two years, so, uh, the program's just, uh, in action now. It just goes online now. But it's still limited. You know, it's not, it's a, a one-time fill-up, you know, it's a couple hundred gallons or whatever. It's not enough. I agree with my colleague. We need a, we need another emergency program here in the city. Now, uh, I'm not sure that, uh, we used to have a relationship with Global, and I arranged for ten thousand gallons of emergency oil from Global. Unfortunately, BlackRock, an anti-global company, uh, an anti-oil company, just bought it out. I'm not sure we're gonna have even that resource anymore. And we used to have that dedicated to Revere, the ten thousand gallons. You You might want to check and see if we're still getting that. We might still be getting that through Global. But I agree with my colleague. Whatever funds we have, it needs to be an emergency fund for oil because it's like $6 a gallon right now. It's going to probably go up to $8. And it's just scary because nobody can afford it. Even, even people that are making a good living can't afford it. And like, like my colleague said, you know, it's income-based, and the income is not enough. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. And just so I can confirm, we can confirm, the, this, this program wouldn't go into effect now. It's for the future. Correct me if I'm wrong, so.
That's, that's correct. So the process that's in place right now is, so once we hopefully secure an affirmative vote from the city council, that gives us the authorization to move forward with drafting an actual aggregation plan and working with a consultant. We would then work with the Department of Energy Resources to submit our proposal. They then send us back their feedback. It then goes to, we have an, we have to have an opportunity for citizen review, so we'd probably make it back here at some point as well, just to discuss it, work through the sort of details of the plan. And then we would submit that aggregation plan to the Department of Public Utilities. And that's where it can sort of get tied up for a little while. So it, it won't really provide relief for this winter, but given these circumstances, now is the time. Time is sort of of the essence to get a program like this in place so that this doesn't happen again. And the other thing that I'll add, the other piece to this, with National Grid, who is the sort of predominant basic energy supplier in the city that most people use, that's your default unless you shop for another competitive supplier, that, the way that that works, they are on about a six-month cycle. So about every six months, twice a year, they make adjustments to their prices based on whoever they purchase their energy from in bulk. So that's why you're seeing this November 1st increase of 33, up to 33 cents per kilowatt hour. It'll probably adjust again around May of next year. We don't know what that adjustment looks like. Could go higher, could go lower. It sort of depends on overall costs, supply and demand.
In this aggregation plan, is that yearly-based? Is that based on a yearly?
So that's something we can work on. We can look into, a lot of other municipalities lock in, because when you aggregate your energy and you buy in bulk, basically, is what the municipality would be doing. Or we can partner with a sort of coalition of other municipalities that do it. There's a group, there's about 20 municipalities in the state that all buy in bulk together, so that's an option. Or we can do it on our own. Basically, you could lock into a one-year fixed rate, two, three years. A lot of municipalities are doing two or three years. So like, for example, the city of Melrose, Somerville, Medford, they're all locked in at a fixed rate of 11.4 cents per kilowatt hour through 2024.
Oh.
And that's something that any resident can opt into at any time. So they're locked in throughout this sort of increase in rates that we're going to be experiencing this winter.
And, and if the, the rate was to go up, the, the resident can also lock, um...
Opt out?
Opt out, I'm sorry.
Correct, Mr. President. So at any time, you can opt, any resident can opt out penalty-free. So it really gives you the flexibility to go back and forth based on if you want to go market rate with National Grid, or if you want to lock into the fixed rate with the, and lock-in is not the correct term there, but if you'd like to go with the sort of fixed rate through the aggregation plan instead.
Sure. Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none, if there's no objection, we'll vote on this. Roll call.
Pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 164, Section 134A, shall the City Council authorize the establishment of a municipal electricity aggregation program? Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Fisconti?
Yes.
Yes, the program has been established.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Would it be possible to suspend the rules to take up Item Number 16? We have a lot of people in the audience here that are here to speak on it.
Okay. Is it, what is it, 18?
Oh, I'm sorry, 18. My apologies, my apologies.
If there's no objection, we'll do a suspension of rules. And take up Motion 18?
Sure. Calendar Item Number 18, Motion Presented by Counselors Cogliandro and Sorino, that the mayor, at the earliest opportunity, appropriate funding in the amount of $25,000 for a traffic study to be undertaken by a professional traffic engineer to evaluate the impacts of vehicular traffic of Route 60, aka Squire Road, in the area of the city from Washington Avenue to Broadway.
Counselor Vice Pres-
Counsel Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President, and through you to the members. This came out of the Traffic Commission, and some of you may have been following, especially the at-large counselors. The Traffic Commission, with my recommendation two months ago, we switched the one-ways on Sagrani Street and Derby Road. So on Sagrani Street, you can't enter from Malden Street, and on Derby Road, you can't enter from Squire Road. That has created a ripple effect through Ward 6 and Ward 3 and all of those side streets off of Malden Street and Squire Road. So the Traffic Commission, after hearing from residents, and you'll hear from some tonight, the Traffic Commission had, had asked that I seek funding from the council in the amount of $25,000, and that, that figure was reached by Chairman Paul Argenzio, who had done some digging and researched some, with some traffic engineers about what a ballpark figure would be. It's not necessarily that the city is obligated to one of those engineers, but just a ballpark figure for what we're trying to accomplish. And what we're trying to accomplish, as the motion says, is to ultimately create, actually, it doesn't say it in the motion, but the ultimate goal is to create a traffic mitigation strategy for the entire neighborhood that works for the residents of Sagrani Street, Derby Road, but also, just as importantly, the residents of Augustus, Gore Road, and all the streets that reverberate, Grover Street, Charger Street. So that is the intent of this motion, and like I said, the Traffic Commission is totally on board. They're the ones who are requesting that we do this. So I would like to get this done expeditiously, so that when they meet this week, they will be able to make some decisions and move forward as quickly as possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Vice President. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I became involved with this since the end of the last Traffic Commission meeting, when the, the Commission decided to extend the traffic study from Washington Ave all the way to Broadway. I agree with everything Counselor Sorino said. I'm not sure what the answer is to, to provide relief for everybody. I don't like providing relief for one person and then having another person, another street having issues and vice versa. You know, it's, it's also, it's not fair to, to put problems onto one street. It's also not fair to try to, try and not solve problems for a street. So I think, I'm not a traffic engineer. I think this is the right answer for now, and hopefully we come up with something that makes everybody happy.
And, Mr. President, if you would excuse the leeway, and I think it's just because of how Minute Track placed the motion, but actually, does it appear on the agenda as, because I'm looking at the...
The old one?
Yeah, so how it appears on the agenda is actually not how I submitted it. I submitted it, could I read into the record and amend the motion to read what I initially submitted? I, I just caught that tonight.
Absolutely.
So the motion that I had submitted said, "Motion presented by Counselor Sorino, Counselor Cogliandro, that the mayor, at the earliest opportunity, appropriate funding in the amount of $25,000 for a traffic study to be undertaken by a professional traffic engineer to evaluate the impacts of vehicular traffic of Route 60, aka Squire Road, in the area of the city from Washington Avenue to Broadway. The purpose of such a study shall be to gather data around how a traffic..." Yeah, sorry. "The purpose of such a study shall be to gather data around how the traffic flowing to and from Squire Road impacts neighborhood residential streets that abut Route 60, particularly the streets off Route 60 eastbound, as well as how to improve traffic flow in order to lessen the burden on residential side streets. The ultimate goal shall be to implement a comprehensive traffic mitigation strategy to ensure these residential streets off of Squire Road are not overburdened with vehicular traffic at a disproportionate rate than similar narrow residential streets in the community." So that's how I had submitted it, but I don't think it, it got chopped off.
It probably, you probably needed a couple pages.
Okay.
Thank you, Counsel Vice President. We'll make that amendment. And Counsel Morabito?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am in full support of this motion. I think we need to figure out what the best way to deal with the traffic, whether it's maneuvering one-way signs, do-not-enter signs, and this is exactly what this study will do. Obviously, the best solution would be for everyone to walk, take trains, but that's, that's not, it's not going to happen. So I commend the Ward 3 and Ward 6 counselor for putting this forth, because if you ever go on Squire Road, just let, let me point out one, one visual factor that everyone can relate to. You're coming around the road or you're coming off Route 1. You're going toward Market Basket, that left lane to go into Market Basket. It backs all the way up, and then all the cars from the middle lane to the right lane, they just all pile up. So this traffic study would really focus on factors like that, that will keep the, not only keep traffic flowing, but getting them out of cutting through the side streets that's really impacting the day-to-day traffic for streets that aren't made for that. And that's what we've got to look at. The next factor is, we need to support our Ward counselors. When we get the study, how much is it going to cost to correct the situation? And that's where they're going to really need our support. So.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't involved in this, at the Traffic Commission and so forth, and I'm hoping, and I think the way I heard the motion, that this is, the Traffic Commission, when its pilot program ends, which I think it has ended, or it will end, 60 days, so that was, how, are we close?
November 1st.
November 1st. So that it's going to go back to the original way, and after the traffic study is completed, then we know where we're going to go with it. So I just want to make that clear, because I know some, I've received some phone calls, and I just want to clear that up for the audience. Thank you.
Counsel Silvestri? Oh, okay. Counsel Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. These neighborhood issues are always, always difficult. You know, I, we've all here as city counselors, we've got dear friends probably on various streets in that area, and it's just, it's difficult. The phones have been ringing nonstop since these changes were made, and, you know, I absolutely, as far as the motion goes, support the study. There's one, one member of the neighborhood that's been impacted, and I'm going to steal some terminology that was used earlier, but it, you know, we kind of did a, a ready-fire-aim mentality, instead of, you know, like, you know, let's do the study, and then based on the study, we'll make whatever changes that need to be made. I mean, I think that would have been a much more prudent thing to do than to just go out and say, "Okay, by the way, we're going to shift traffic here and shift traffic there." It, you know, it caught everybody by surprise. There really was, at that point in time, not to, at least to my knowledge, as someone who lives in that area, no real neighborhood input, or you just woke up kind of one morning and said, "No turn here and no turn there." So the study is absolutely critical, but, you know, one of the things that's happened, a, and again, this is just for the edification of councils. I mean, the horse is kind of out of the barn right now, but I was talking to a member of the Traffic Commission who was talking about, you know, the traffic going up Sagrani Street. And I empathize, I empathize with the people that live on Sagrani Street, because that traffic has doubled over the last 10 years. But the reason it's doubled is because we keep putting more and more and more people in this city, and more people equal more vehicles. No one's going to tell me any different. You know, there's just absolutely no, there's no argument against it. There's more traffic in this city. We can talk 90% of the traffic's from somewhere else, and no one drives in Revere from Revere, but the bottom line is, the more residents that we have in this city, it's going to produce more traffic, people that need to get in and out of the city of Revere. So, you know, we need to really start looking at that, because if we don't, five, 10 years from now down the road, this crowd out here that's concerned about these issues is going to extend over to these seats, and then eventually in the hallways. So we can't, you know, we have to be a little more diligent when it comes to density that we're creating throughout this city, and that's all I'll say. I, I commend the makers of the motion. The study is absolutely needed. It's my understanding that everything will be kind of reverted back until the, until the study has been concluded, and then based on that study, then we can move forward and see what makes the most sense for all traffic throughout that area. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay. If there were, Counsel Cogliandro?
I just have a question. Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, maybe to Counselor Sorino or Counselor Zambudo or Counselor Rizzo. The next Traffic Commission meeting, is there going to be a discussion on whether we actually revert back to the original way, or, you know, or change one street and not the other? I'm not sure. Maybe someone has the answer. Thank you.
Counselor Sorino?
Mr. President, through you to Counselor Cogliandro. It's my understanding that it is a public hearing, and for the education of my residents who are in the audience, my comments from the previous meeting will stand. I will continue to ask the Traffic Commission that they turn Sagrani Street back because of the traffic light, but to keep Derby Road as it stands now, as a do-not-enter, from Squire Road, and try to work out issues from there. However, the Traffic Commission is an independent authority, and they, they are the ultimate decision-makers, but that's what I will be advocating for.
Thank you.
Okay. I, I just going to make a short comment on this. I, I saw the Traffic Commission meeting that day, and this council chambers was a packed house. And I want to commend all the people that were here that day. It was obviously two different sides, okay? One being opposed and one being for. And I must say that it was nice to see the residents act in a professional, courteous manner, and they weren't belligerent. They, they completely disagreed with one another. But you guys acted so professional that it made it easier for the Traffic Commission to listen to everyone's concerns. So I, I just want to commend both sides, because they're valid points on both sides, and obviously, a Traffic Commission is definitely needed. But I, I really just wanted to say that, that it was nice to see a packed house. I, I've never seen it, because usually if there's a packed house in here, okay, it's, it's not good for the city council. I will say that, okay? We've all experienced that. So it was nice to see it on the other end, and I just wish I was up on top here, you know, at, at the chair to witness that, but it was nice to see. So I'm going to open it up to some of the comments from the residents. If they have any comments, please come and speak your mind. Go right ahead. Go right ahead. Yes?
Good evening, counselors. Counsel President?
Bring that, yeah, there you go.
Thank you. My name is Christine Robertson. I reside at 187 Charger Street. I am the second flow-through street across Squire Road down to the commercial end of Charger Street, going to the shopping center, as well as taking the left or right onto Squire Road. The traffic on my street, we've lived there for 42 years, has increased not tenfold, twenty-fold. We cannot get in or out of our driveway without people yelling at us, swearing at us, or beeping their horns. Usually, for backup traffic, there might be 10 cars waiting for the light to change. There's 30 and 40 cars now. I've counted. I've stared outside, and I've counted. At the meeting, at the Traffic Commission meeting, they had data, which I unfortunately do not have, but some of these streets, including Augustus Street and Derby Road and Gore Road, have seen 3,500 cars in a day, a day in a residential neighborhood. This is insane. There is no peace. You cannot even sit in your backyard without horns and people yelling and, and music. I mean, to the decibel level coming out of some of these cars is amazing. It's like, how do you even hear a fire engine or an ambulance behind? It's like, how do you even hear a fire engine or an ambulance behind you? And this goes on day in and day out. I sat at the Traffic Commission, I had to take my blinds down, off my window, because they got shaken off because of the vibration of the amount of cars that come down our street. I, I know what Augusta Street is feeling, because we've been living with it for a long time. And it's like someone said, you threw a rock in the pond, and that ripple effect has gone far and wide. We need someone, somewhere, to do something to help us. I've spoke, I've written to the state. I've written to the governor. I've written to the Speaker of the House. And you know what I get from, oh, I wrote to MassDOT, um, Stephanie Polito, who was the director at the time? You know what I got for an answer? The only concern they're concerned about is the flow of traffic on Squire Road. So, basically, tough luck, everybody else, learn to live with it. That's so unfair. We pay taxes. We like where we live. We can't live there anymore. We're thinking of selling our house, because it's just so insane. Help us. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, uh, I will say, uh, I, I believe you've heard from the council, and I believe the funding, there's no doubt that, um, everyone is in favor of this funding, so that will take place, uh, but, uh, any other comments? Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Gennaro. Excuse me. Good evening. My name is Gennaro Cataldo. I'm the owner of both 35 Augusta Street and 140 Derby Road. I had some brief comments here, just to share with you, please. Thank you for taking the time to hear from the residents of Ward Six. Those who have been affected by the Traffic Commission, the order, excuse me, the Traffic Commission order on August eighteenth to conduct a sixty-day trial reversing the one-way direction of the south side of Sigourney Street from Grover toward Malden Street, and the north side of Derby Road from Grover Street to Squire Road. Uh, through you, Mr. President, Counselor Serino is, is correct that they have to take a vote to confirm this, that it will revert back, both of those actions. I'm speaking on behalf of the residents standing behind me. Folks, if you would stand up. We had, we've been meeting. We've been talking. And all the residents standing now, and if you care to put their names on the record, they will be happy to file up to the podium, state their name, address, and affirmation with this statement. We believe one voice speaking for all of us is the most efficient use of everyone's time, yours especially. Thank you. Counselors, through you, Mr. President, we represent Ward Six. I'm sorry? Oh, absolutely, please. Counselors, through you, Mr. President, we represent Ward Six. We applaud the effort to send a request to Mayor, Mayor Riggo's desk to approve a traffic flow study as motioned by Counselors Serino and Cogliandro. We have a request that one of you councilors enter a substitute motion or amendment to this motion to fund the project, subject to the Traffic Commission placing Derby Road and Sigourney Street back to their original configuration, or to draft a letter stating the same. The reasons for our request are based in logic and common sense. The Traffic Commission stated they would revert their action if their decision negatively impacted the community. There have been no positive impacts to any of our eleven community streets from Marshall to Charger, except the two sections changed. So, by asking you to add this amendment or substitute, it ensures the Commission will have the opportunity to follow through on their original intention to conduct a proper study. Now, here are some facts for you. The reversals have improved forty-three homes on two half-streets, leaving residents in the rest of Ward Six neighborhood. Three hundred and forty-nine homes negatively affected from Marshall to Charger Street. If you're gonna do the percentages, eight-point-six percent are positively affected, ninety-one-point-four percent negatively affected. And that's from Marshall to Charger. The best use of the, uh, excuse me, as you know, Squire Road will soon have Popeyes Fried Chicken built at the end of Derby Road. We've actually gone out and done a little research, one of us, a resident, spoken with the manager of Popeyes, who, who will be running the Squire Road location. They do expect approximately eight-hundred orders per day, with a high being around a thousand. The present McDonald's, just to give you clarification on what that means, the present McDonald's across the road, their manager estimates they handle about fifteen-hundred orders a day. These are data points for your consideration. We've done no analysis on that. The Traffic Commission meeting of August eighteen issued its order with very little data and similar analysis. Last, seven days of traffic data was provided for Sigourney, and six days of data for Derby, along with the street resident petition to request the reversals. We ask that the results of this study include an action plan created by city officials, a group of residents, and the engineering firm. We realize the proper form to petition the reversal is the Traffic Commission meeting this Thursday, and we shall attend. The funding and stipulations fall to you, Mr. President and councilors. We ask that one of you strongly consider those who asked me to speak as one voice for all of us. Please make the amendment to Counselor Serino's motion, a substitute motion, or draft a letter before the Traffic Commission meets to ensure this study is done as our traffic flow was originally designed. Ermarch this expenditure to ensure the best use of our tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Kelly, Ninety-Nine Derby. Good evening, councilors. I've got a lot to say, and I know it's been a long night already, so I'm gonna try to keep it short, but I wanna try to dispel some rumors that, um, I've heard out there. The residents of Derby Road have been putting up with what some of, uh, what the other streets are seeing now for years. Um, we are the ones that have not been able to back out of our driveways and get yelled at, and things shake off our walls from large trucks and all of this. And we do get eighteen-hundred to two-thousand cars a day. This, um, I've been there over twenty-five years, and it, we knew it was a, you know, a busier street when we bought the property, but there was nowhere near the businesses that exist right now back then. We didn't have the Market Basket. We didn't have BJ's Wholesale. We didn't have a lot of the fast-food establishments. So, things got extreme, you know, exacerbated over the years for us, and we put up with it. The straw that broke the camel's back that no one's talking about is, in fact, the Popeyes. We fought for the Popeyes. We did not want it to open. Everyone keeps saying, and this is the rumor that I kinda wanna dispel, is that, "Well, that was, that's a commercial zone lot, and they have the right to go there by right." No, a commercial business has the right to go there. A drive-thru operation has to get a special permit. The city council approved that special permit. In addition to that special permit for the drive-thru, they also got two variances. One for the, um, the maneuvering of the drive-thru, they don't really have the, quite the angle space that they need, and the other for lack of parking. The, the reason why they got the variance for the lack of parking is because they said their whole business depends on their drive-thru. So, they don't have anywhere to park. So, if the drive-thru backs up, and you can drive down Derby Road, and it's not a one, you know, it doesn't remain the way it is now, all those cars from Popeyes, in addition to what we see just on a regular daily basis, eight-hundred to two-thousand cars a day, is gonna be exacerbated by another eight-hundred to a thousand cars a day. I don't think any one side street should have to, you know, withstand all that traffic. And what, what gets me is that all the other streets don't want it, and I don't, I don't want them to have it either. But why should one street be designated to withstand and absorb all of this traffic that, and none of the other, and, and so that all the other streets can remain quiet? And the percentages that I just heard, that really offends me. Because just because there's fewer of us, that means we don't matter as much? We still pay, our tax rate is the same. We all are paying the same amount of, of residential tax rate here. So, I don't understand why, just because there's fewer than us, well, let them take it. They don't matter. There's only four, thirty-nine homes there or whatever. Let them get, excuse me, but let them get screwed by all the traffic, as long as our street stays, uh, quiet. We're all streets off of Squire Road. It's not like one of us should be getting more traffic than any of the others. So, what, what I'm hearing is, you know, having the sixty, after the sixty-day trial period, have this revert back until the study is done. No. So, we're supposed to withstand about thirty-five-hundred cars a day until this study is done? How is that fair? I mean, s- something has to be done. I don't want, like I said, I don't want other residents to be negatively impacted either. That, because I've lived with it so long, so I know what they're going through, and I do feel for them. I want all of us to be happy. I want all of us to be able to enjoy our homes and live peacefully and quietly in a residential neighborhood. But when you overdevelop an area that abuts a residential neighborhood, you've got to be concerned and aware of the impacts of that. And I think all the decisions that were made over the years with all of that commercial development going on, wasn't considered that it abuts against a residential neighborhood. And now, one street is supposed to take all of that, and it's just not fair.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. What I would like to, uh, mention, uh, to Counselor Serino, I believe we, um, if
I'm not mistaken, the mayor would have to send a request to us in order to, um, request the, the council to put aside the twenty-five thousand dollars, so, uh, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. President, I did speak with the mayor, and he seemed totally on board. So, I think this is us asking, and then, once, once something is authorized and, you know, once they, they get an exact engineer. Right. They'll come back with an actual figure.
Okay. So, we're gonna have him request it to us, correct?
Yes.
Great. Okay.
Mr. President, just a quick point of information.
Yes.
I think just for the edification of the people that live on Derby Road, I believe the exit that goes currently directly from the old Honeydew site onto Derby Road is gonna be blocked with the new Popeyes, that they will have to enter and exit onto Squire Road. So, I don't believe that, that really should be a concern. I don't want people on Derby Road to think, you know, that, like, that's just gonna become a, a default for leaving Popeyes. I, I don't believe that to be the case. And we were very conscientious of that when we were negoti, when we were going through our negotiations with Popeyes and with their attorney.
Yes, I, I, I concur for.
Excuse me? Excuse me? I wanna know that even if that crap, traffic from Popeyes does not exit directly onto Derby Road, what would be preventing the traffic exiting that establishment to then turn onto Derby Road in an attempt to get out of the traffic backup on Squire Road? Nothing. They're gonna come down Derby Road. And if they don't have enough parking in that parking lot when the drive-thru backs up, they're not only gonna be driving down Derby Road, they're gonna be parking on Derby Road, because they don't have the parking in Popeyes' parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor Serino?
And, uh, Mr. President, before I speak on Mr. Cataldo's, um, amended motion, um, just response to Ms. Kelly regarding the parking, they did get a variance for parking. However, they can add two or three more spaces on the side of their building abutting Derby Road, not on Derby Road, but on their property. But the residents, her neighbors who live directly across the street, preferred to have landscaping and a, a total buffer, but there, if, the parking is an issue, they can remove the landscaping and use that space for additional parking.
I agree.
So, again, that's, you know, we're going round and round and round.
We are. And, and, and there were reasons, because of, of those variances, to, um, satisfy the, the residents there. So, um, with that being said, I, I agree.
And if I, if I might, uh, rebut and, and ask my colleagues to support my motion as amended as I originally filed it, but was not on the agenda. Earlier, when, when we did the Popeyes, this is how this originally came from the council to the Traffic Commission. Um, we had asked the Traffic Commission to look at the feasibility of changing the one-ways on Derby and Sigourney, and that got us now in the mess that we are in now. As the Ward Counselor, I am advocating to the Traffic Commission as myself. However, at this point, I don't think the city council should direct the Traffic Commission. I think at this point, we leave it to that, the Traffic Commission to deliberate and see if they, how they see fit to move forward.
Okay. All right. If there's no objection, um, on that? All in favor, all opposed? As amended? So ordered. Thank you. Next, uh, order of business. Back to order of business.
Calendar item number thirteen, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor requests the chief of police to increase patrols on East Mountain Avenue due to vehicles speeding and not stopping at stop signs.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Speaks for himself.
Okay. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number fourteen, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor requests the DPW to install a guardrail in the area of seven-eighty North Shore Road. Within the last couple of months, the home of this location was hit by a speeding motor vehicle, and the pole located next to the home is also hit. Further, three weeks ago, a fatality occurred in the area of one-eighty-two and one-ninety North Shore Road. Several months ago, electronic speed signs that were requested to be installed have not yet been installed. The Revere Police Department and state police should work together to enforce speeding on this dangerous stretch of one-A.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is one of the most dangerous roadways in the city of Revere. It's comparable to ninety-three or ninety-five with regard to speed. We have had, in the past twenty years, we have had three fatalities on that highway. Just a couple of months ago, a car went into seven-eighty North Shore Road. Two weeks ago, six feet, or seven, eight feet from one-eighty, from seven-eighty North Shore Road, a car hit a telephone pole. Just this past weekend, with a convenience store in Oak Island, another car lost control due to speed. What I'm looking for on that highway is to have better police enforcement down there, state police, local police, working together. I mean, if cars are going seventy, eighty miles an hour, and there's, it's a forty or fifty-mile roadway, something's wrong. Something's wrong for us not addressing this, for the city not addressing it. I've also asked, I don't know, a year ago, to have a speed monitoring signage put down there, a couple on the eastbound, a couple on the, uh, a couple on the southbound, a couple on the eastbound, uh, the northbound, okay? Between John Avenue and Revere Street. You take your life in your hands down there. It's, it's insane. I mean, how many car accidents do we have to have down there before we get out there and make people that are coming into this city aware that if you violate the rules, you're gonna get a ticket, you're gonna get a fine? It's, it's simple. We have that, those resources there. The other situation with the speed monitoring signs is, does it stop cars? Absolutely not. But it does something else. It makes people driving through the city aware that they are speeding, that they shouldn't be flying through the city seventy, eighty miles an hour. I mean, one of the, you know, we're talking tonight about four-hundred million for high school. I agree, we need a high school, no question about it. But what about the kids that are gonna be going to that school? Are we providing them with the public safety? They come out of their house on John Avenue, they come out, they come out of Oak Island, they go on the, on Revere Street, they're coming down off of the bridge. No public safety there, none whatsoever. So, what I'm doing is, I'm asking the mayor to take some of that CIT money that each of us has, and purchased, four machines for down there, okay? You're talking about twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars, okay? And again, is it gonna stop cars? Absolutely not. But it's gonna make somebody that's doing seventy or eighty or sixty miles an hour, whatever it is, that they're aware they're going that fast, and that the speed limit is more likely fifty miles an hour on that highway. When you come to an ex, uh, uh, an intersection, it reduces to thirty miles an hour as you approach the intersection. This is so important to these people that live in this city.
Thank you.
People that live outside the city, they're coming through here, they're speeding, ticket 'em, tag 'em. Let 'em pay a fine. Make them aware of what they're doing.
Thank you.
I think all of us have had enough.
Thank you, Counselor.
So, again, I hope this will be done, and the Traffic Commission will get on the ball here and make, uh, uh, the DPW and the mayor's office aware of the citations that are going down there. Very important.
Thank you.
But let's do it. But let's do it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilor Rizzo.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I wholeheartedly concur with Councilor Powers' motion. And you notice a theme going on here tonight. We've got the poor Robertsons over here that are dealing with traffic. We've got people screaming out in the hallway right now, dealing with traffic. And now Councilor Powers' motion because of speeding vehicles, we've got, this is just a never-ending issue that keeps getting perpetuated. And by the way, he brought up in his comments the high school, which is a very valid point, but North Shore Road is essentially, that's a budding Wonderland. This is where, this is where all these speeding vehicles are, or not, not it's the only place, I mean, it's everywhere, but, you know, it's a very, very dangerous location for people walking in and out of around there. And we absolutely, absolutely need more, you know, we need more monitoring, we need more speed patrols. The problem is, we have less police officers now than we did six or seven years ago. So we need to really invest in more, you know, you talk to the, you know, you talk to our poor traffic officer, Sergeant Janino, I mean, he's pulling his hair out. And, you know, I mean, like, he can't keep up. Everybody wants to, you know, have their streets monitored. But how are we gonna do it if we're not putting the resources on the streets? We need to really, next budget, I think we really need to have a conversation beforehand and kind of prioritize our investments. Where are we putting our money? You know, and, you know, if we're not putting enough, which I don't believe we are, into adequate public safety, we can sit up here for the next fifty-two weeks until the next budget and talk about speeding vehicles and speed bumps and all this other stuff, but it's enforcement. If we have no enforcement, who cares how many speed bumps or how many signs? That's not stopping people. We've been talking about this for decades, putting up more signage, more blinking lights. People don't pay attention. They, you know what they pay attention to? A blue light behind them. When the cops pull them over and they get a speeding ticket and their insurance goes up by two or three hundred dollars, then maybe we start to make progress. So I agree wholeheartedly. And by the way, public safety is the biggest thing here. He's had people on that stretch of road killed many, many times. And it's shameful that we can't, that we can't do something about that. I think we can, and I think it should start in next budget, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council. Okay. All, if there are no other, oh, please, come to the podium.
Christine Robertson, one-eighty-seven Charger Street. John, I couldn't agree with you more. But I have a question. Is North Shore Road, like one-A, considered a state highway because there was a lot of dis, I had a lot of discussions with the Department of Transportation regarding Squire Road and one-oh-seven and all of these state roads? We, there's no, there's a speed limit?
It is, excuse me, it is a state highway, okay? And there is a speed limit down there. I believe it's fifty miles an hour.
You're correct.
And when you approach an intersection, it reduces to thirty and twenty, okay?
You're correct. But the catch-twenty-two is, who is enforcing this? The state police or our local police?
It's a state, excuse me, it's a state highway.
Right.
The state should be enforcing it. However, the Revere Police Department, if they have the adequate resources, can get out there and enforce it also. They have, each of them have jurisdiction on that roadway. It's in the city of Revere.
Right. But that's, that's the issue, is that, you know, no offense to the state police, because I have a lot of friends on the state police department. When's the last time you saw a state police car monitoring one-oh-seven, North Shore Road, Squire Road?
That's the point I'm trying to make.
Right?
We need it, we need Revere down there too.
I make one other suggestion, and I know that it was adopted, I believe maybe a year or two ago, that citywide, the speed limit is supposed to be twenty-five. If you ride down many streets, you'll see a sign that says speed limit thirty, you'll see a speed limit sign that says twenty, you'll see one that says twenty-five. There needs to be some consistency. If they're all supposed to be twenty-five, have the sign department make all the signs twenty-five and replace the ones that say thirty. I know that in a school zone, they're supposed to be twenty, but all the others should be twenty-five. I mean, you drive down, what's that, Sergeant Street? I think it's Sergeant Street. There's a, one of those blinking LED speed limit things, it says twenty, if you go by, it says twenty-five and it smiles at you.
Yep.
The next post, it says speed limit thirty. So what are you doing?
Yeah.
What are you doing? There needs to be, and I know they're busy and it's a very small committee and I know that-
Thank you.
You know, thank you.
Okay. Council Powers, quick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. With regard to the comments the woman just made, she's a hundred percent right. I'm gonna give you three other streets, okay, that deserve some attention, and maybe Ashley can put these down also. The Sagamore Street, it's become a cut through because of the traffic on Revere Street and North Shore Road to get down to Wonderland, to the garage and the parking lot down there. That's number one. Number two, Rice Avenue, has also has probably a dozen streets intersecting that. There should be a monitoring sign down there, let people know that they're going fast. Believe me, when people understand it, they'll slow down and the same thing applies to Mills Avenue. So those three streets need some serious attention down there. People call me every other day, I drive down there and people approach me. They're concerned with the traffic.
Agreed.
And it needs to be straightened out. The only way to straighten it out is to act on it and do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Powers. All in favor, all opposed? If there are no other questions or concerns, so ordered.
And it's noted that Councilor Zambudo was recused from discussion on that motion. Calendar item number fifteen, motion presented by Council Morabito in collaboration with the city clerk, that the city council host a certificate presentation in the city council chambers in the month of December on an annual basis to recognize city employees nearing retirement that calendar year.
Council Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. So about a month ago, I gave a certificate to retiring firefighters who, it was well-deserved, you know, they put their life on the lines all these years, not knowing what their job is gonna require for that day. All they know is, they may be saving a life, they could be taking a cat out of a tree. And it made me reflect upon our city workers, our police, who also do the same thing. And, you know, our city is run by so many different department leaders. And below them, they have so many workers who make their department functional. And we, I don't want to say we take them for granted, but we're elected to run a city and the city does not operate with any of these city workers. They just keep our city running smoothly, functioning. I think putting their time into the city, excuse me, councilors, I'm speaking. I give you the respect when you guys are speaking, can you please give me the respect? I think this is a very, very, very important motion because we're, each and every one of us are elected by the people. And what makes us look good are the departments' heads, they're the people under them, because they keep our city running smoothly. Any complaints, they go to City Hall, they take care of it. You go to the city clerk's office, their office is inundated with complaints day after day. Not only their office, each and every one of them. These employees are working for thirty, forty years. The least we can do for them is give them a certificate of appreciation for their years of providing, giving, making our city the best it can be.
Thank you, Council. Are there any questions regarding this? I guess, I commend you on the motion. I guess my only question with this is, I'm wondering, rather than putting that on the city clerk's department, should it be something that should be part of the retirement board and have that in conjunction with the retirement board rather than the city clerk? Because we do, any certificate that we give out, okay, councilors pay for that. Correct me if I'm wrong. So, you know, if that, if that's going to be the case, that would be coming out of the clerk's budget. So I'm wondering if it makes sense to have it come out of the retirement board's budget rather than the clerk's responsibility.
Honestly, I don't think, we don't have a hundred people retiring in the city each year. We don't even have fifty people retiring each year.
I don't know what that number is.
So I think, to talk about funds versus appreciating our city workers are two different stories.
I did not say that.
So I don't even, it's an afterthought in my mind to think about funding our certificate versus appreciating our city workers. They go above and beyond each and every day to make each and every one of us in our city look good.
Counsel, thank you.
So I think we shouldn't even be looking at it. In collaboration with the city clerk, she can find out who's retiring by the end of the year. It's not an enormous list and we can just have a presentation and on behalf of the city council, show our appreciation for those who are nearing retirement that year.
Okay. Any other-
Mr. President, a friendly amendment would be that the retirement board notify the city clerk of who's gonna be retiring at the, so that she doesn't have to do the research. I don't care about the money.
Yeah.
I'm talking about, it's this way, she doesn't have to do all that legwork.
Yeah, we don't want the city clerk to do the work on something like that.
Anything we can do to get this done to show appreciation each year for our retirees.
That's my friendly amendment.
I wholeheartedly agree with that.
Thank you.
Great. On the motion as amended, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Thank you.
Calendar item number sixteen, motion presented by councilors Rizzo and Serino that a meeting be held to discuss the status of the property known as the Quality Inn located at one-hundred Morris Street with the mayor, inspector of buildings, city solicitor, license commission, Frank Strangie, and/or the new community development director.
Council Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So, of course, I've been thinking about this every time I drive by there and there's the empty parking lot, you've got this big building sitting there. Last time it was used, I believe, was to house COVID victims, people that had COVID. And then it was subsequent to that, it was rumored to house all of the homeless and addicted from mass and casts. In fact, credit to our ward six city councillor, Ricky Serino, he left his job because the organization that he worked for actually deals in substance abuse. So they were all for turning a piece of valuable property here in the city into basically an addiction center, which I don't think any of the neighbors up in North Revere would have wanted. And certainly, I don't think it's the best thing for our tax rolls. So he wound up leaving his job because he would not rescind his motion that were to have prevented that. So now, we're still left with an empty building. And this passed a couple of weeks ago, or a week and a half ago, in the Globe, in the metro section, it talks about defunct hotels offer new real estate housing for homeless people. So, you know, I think, and this happened to be in Brockton, it was a roadway inn that they're turning into a, and look, I understand that we have a problem with homelessness and I don't know necessarily the Revere City Council's gonna solve that problem, but, you know, what we can do is at least have a conversation with our planning department to see what this valuable piece of property is gonna be going forward, if it is in fact gonna be a hotel, or if it is gonna, what is the owner of the property planning on doing? I think we need to get ahead of this a little bit before something just gets dropped in our lap like it did the last time and we started reading about it in the local media. I think we need to get ahead of it, you know, for the benefit of the entire city, but certainly for the benefit of those people that live up in North Revere. You know, who are probably sitting there wondering what's going on with this empty parking lot and this big, huge, empty building. So I'm hopeful that the council supports the motion and that we can start having some dialogue with our planning department, with our city solicitor, with the licensing board, what's going on with their innkeeper's license. I think there's a lot of things we need to be thinking about right now to get ahead of what potentially could happen.
Great.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. When I was first elected, I think one of the first things I did was give a certificate of appreciation to the manager of the Quality Inn. And before I was elected and before COVID, the Quality Inn was used by residents as a meeting place. They were wonderful. When they did shut down at the beginning of COVID, the Quality Inn donated the food that was in their kitchen to the city's food pantry because they had to close their operation. And at that point, they didn't know when they'd be reopening. This was at the very beginning of the pandemic. And then it was obviously used, as Council Rizzo said, for a pandemic hotel. And then things kind of went south after that. There was a period that the hotel was shuttered after it was no longer being used as a COVID-19 quarantine location. It remained shuttered, I think, through most of, all of 2021. In fact, I would from time to time go online and try to make a reservation to see if they were accepting reservations for, you know, weeks or months out. And I was kind of questioning what was happening. And then the whole ordeal with the city of Boston wanting to essentially take it over and utilize it for that purpose. And then that led to, in February, I believe it was Super Bowl Sunday, I remember drafting the letter, they were up for their, the renewal of their innkeeper license with the license commission. And I had asked the license commission to not renew the innkeeper license because it had not been utilized as a hotel for close to two years at that point. However, to the manager at the Times' credit, he came before the license commission and he explained that, you know, now that we are through COVID, we wanna reopen, we wanna be a community partner again, and gave a whole wonderful spiel that really amounted to nothing. Then you fast forward to the summer, and I just want to back up for a second, that I want to give credit where credit is due, and the mayor, I had kind of kept apprised through all of this. Obviously, he was opposed to the mass and cast situation. And then with the innkeeper license, he was very, you know, acutely aware of what was going on and kind of supported me in kind of keeping an eye on that. Then, fast forward to June or July of this year, the Quality Inn started using their parking lot as a, like a park-and-fly to Logan Airport. So we understood that, we shut that down real quickly. So there may have been a couple of weeks that people noticed there were cars. Shortly thereafter, we, you know, we totally shut that down. But I have to be honest, I'm very disappointed in the Quality Inn because they were such a great community partner for my first year, you know, as a member of this council, and a good neighbor to the neighborhood. But it's, obviously, as time goes on, it's gonna become decrepit and God only knows if people haven't been staying in there in over a year, what the condition of the hotel itself is. And I don't want to say that the manager or the management is being sneaky, but they kind of are being sneaky as to what they're doing because they never seem to let the city know. So I think this is a great way to kind of move forward and get everyone on the same page as to what is the future of the Quality Inn, and I support that. So thank you, Mr. President.
Council McKenna.
I would just like to add, Ricky, Council Serino, sorry, you could call Michael Wells' Inspection Services and have them go down and take a look at it, see if they can go in there and take a look at what's going on there, because if there are people living there, I mean, so I would call Michael Wells, definitely.
Mr. President, through you, at this point, I don't, I don't have reason to believe that people are living there. It's just more what, you know, what, thinking their next move is going to be. Because clearly, if we're now in October and in February, you know, COVID is pretty much, we're all living and dealing with it, hotels are back, restaurants are back, there's literally no reason this should not be operating as a hotel, you know, as of like the spring. So why it's not operating as a hotel, I think, is more of the question and what happens next is why. So, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number seventeen, motion presented by Council Cogliandro that the mayor or representative from the administration appear before the city council to discuss the biennial Columbus Day Parade for 2023.
Council Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've marched in that parade every year since I've been alive and I think COVID is, you know, not as rampant as it was and I think we need to look into having that parade. It's about much more, it's really a prideful event for our- It's, it's really a, a prideful event for our community. The baseball teams, the dance troops, karate schools, uh, the bands, everything. It's just, it's such an amazing day. And, oh, I'm sorry, uh, thank you, Counsel McKenna, the politicians that march, uh, in the parade as well. So, and, and truthfully, I, I don't care what we call it, truthfully. But I want it back, and we need to have a discussion about how and when we're going to do that. Thank you.
Counsel Sereno.
Mr. President, I want to echo Counselor Cogliandro's sentiments and support him 100%. I'm 30 years old, and I can remember as a little kid, s- uh, standing at the corner by Domaino's on the corner of Malden Street and Broadway, watching it with my family, then marching in it for Revere Youth Hockey, then for Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, and then eventually, um, as a candidate for public office. And those are such wonderful memories, and then after the parade, we would always have a family dinner. Those are wonderful traditions that our city and children and families in our city have had. And to let it go to the wayside would just be an absolute, it would be terrible, and I think we should resurrect it and bring it back. So, thank you.
Counsel Zambudo.
Uh, thank you. I wholeheartedly agree, and, uh, we, we need to bring back the Columbus Day Parade.
Thank you. Counsel Rizzo.
Um, just very briefly, I, I, I support the motion. In fact, uh, when I became mayor, we hadn't had a parade in like four or five years. That had been put aside. We resurrected it, and I think it came back bigger and better, and, and I, so, you know, I'm, you know, everybody, you know, that old saying, everybody loves a parade. But what I didn't realize until just this moment is that probably people like Counselor Zambudo, Counselor Powers, and myself probably marched by Counselor Sereno at one time back then, when he was a little boy standing at Domaino's, so, you know. Hopefully, he wasn't one of those kids with the shaving cream, so, you know.
You, you, you can add in Counsel Cogliandro as well.
Easy, easy, easy.
That's right. Yeah, I'm sure Counselor Cogliandro was standing next to him. That's right. That's right.
Um, with, uh, with that being said, I, uh, I completely agree with, uh, my fellow colleagues. I, I, I think the Columbus Day Parade should be back here. Uh, it is a community event. It's great to see people that are, uh, out there, uh, enjoying the parade, and I remember it, uh, both, uh, here as well as in East Boston, when I lived there, as it was going back and forth. Uh, it's, it's a great day, and it's, it would be a shame to have it just, uh, die by the wayside and, and, and let it die. So, I, I would, I look forward to it coming back, and I hope the administration has all intentions on bringing it back. So, um, thank you for the, the motion. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counsel Silvestri, that the mayor request a representative from National Grid to come before the city council to explain the rising cost of electricity.
Counsel Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I think we all spoke enough on this, uh, earlier this evening. Um, the, the residents of the city are, are getting hit with a, a huge rising cost in electricity. Um, I know it's not, uh, an area we usually get involved in, but I would like to see someone from National Grid come up here and give us an explanation, when it may go down, how long we're looking at this, so we can give residents, uh, some answers. Thank you.
All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Counselor Silvestri, that the mayor request the chief of police to have a patrol car at the intersection of Route 60 at Beach Street. The red light at this intersection is ignored, causing a very dangerous traffic issue.
Counsel Silvestri.
Yes, um, Mr. President, uh, Route, Route 1A going into Bell Circle, um, right by the, um, dog track, that, that light i- is just, i- it's never obeyed. It doesn't matter if it's 7:00 in the morning, uh, or 7:00 at night. You go through that intersection coming from Beach Street into that 1A where, where Duncan is, and, and you're getting stranded in the middle of the road on oncoming traffic, all hours of the day. Um, we need to have that patrolled, uh, and, and someone watching that area, and, um, I'd appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any comments? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counselor Silvestri, that the mayor request all state agencies to maintain their property in and around the city of Revere. The overgrowth on Route 16 in and around Bell Circle is getting to be a major problem.
Counsel Silvestri.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, and, um, I, I think the motion speaks for itself. Uh, I know Counsel Rizzo put a motion in a few weeks back, similar, and, um, we need to stay on these. Uh, we do reach out to our state in reps, and, and, um, they do a diligent job reaching out to these agencies to get this property done, but they have to do more in keeping these properties up.
Couldn't agree more. Um, no comments? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Um, before we adjourn, we have, uh, a couple of, uh, points of personal privilege. Let's start off with, uh, Counsel Keith.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, uh, again, I'm sure everyone is very aware, but, um, October is, uh, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Um, happened to be wearing a pink tie, uh, to, to signify my support, and I know that the, our council certainly does a lot. Yesterday, there was a nice event, uh, for a local resident who's battling in, um, in her fight right now, and she's doing a very nice job. Her family, uh, hosted a time for her, um, Tanya Pizzi. I just want to give a shout-out to her for her fight and let her know that the city council, and of course, uh, many people in Revere, uh, are su- supporting her, as well as our other good friend, uh, in the neighborhood down there, Linda Marzo, who's, um, finishing up her treatments and, uh, on the road to recovery. So, we're very, uh, excited to, to see, um, and send her good wishes. It also happens to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Uh, I was, I was, um, uh, notified by someone coming here today. They recognized the tie, and they said, "Not only are you wearing pink, but you're also wearing purple," whi- which reckon, uh, recognizes the, um, domestic violence awareness. So, I just wanted to, we, we, that was a subject tonight, but, um, let everyone know that, um, we certainly support, uh, those efforts, and, uh, want to bring, make sure we provide that awareness. So, hopefully, next, uh, council meeting, maybe if everyone can, I'll, let's see if we can have the best duel for, uh, our pink attire. Um, I won't wear a headband, but could possibly wear another different pink tie, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Morabito.
Thank you. Um, earlier this weekend, um, we lost a Revere native unexpectedly. Um, it was a tragic loss to a lot of people, fam- his family, friends. Um, we lost Richard Tucksbury. I happen to know him because I went to school with his brother Joe. Um, I was fortunate to have been out with him a couple weeks ago, um, and he was really a dear friend to our colleague, Counsel Cogliandro. And I just want to tell you what I observed hanging out with him and his friends one night. He was loved by everyone in his group. He just connected so well with everyone. He was just jovial. Um, he was just a nice kid overall. He seemed to be, go up, you could go up to him, and he would just talk to you as if he knew you, uh, for a long time, because he was just a genuinely nice person. And I know he's here in spirit, and he was here for Counsel Cogliandro's, uh, wedding in spirit, because he was a very dear friend to him. And I know this is very, very hard for the counselor to speak on behalf of his friend, so I'm doing it for him. Um, and it's just a very sad day, um, that one minute you're here and the next, you may not. So, we really want to take every day with as if we're not gonna be here tomorrow. And tell those you love that you love them, because, um, it is a very sad day in Revere today. And, um, my heart goes out on behalf of the city council to his family, his friends, and, uh, Counsel Cogliandro, we're here with you, too, for support.
Thank you. Well said. If we can have a moment of silence for Richard Tucksbury. And this concludes our, uh, October 17th city council meeting. Our next meeting will be, uh, next week on October 24th. Motion to adjourn. Thank you.